Yeah, they're kind of changing.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, July 21, 7:00 PM, and this is the agenda in the Moscow City Council regular meeting. With that, I will call on Art to lead us.
... United States of America, and we are a republic of all who stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. And now we will move on to item number one, which is the consent agenda.
I believe that we accept and pass the consent agenda. Second?
Okay, John moved to approve the consent agenda as it is. Walter seconded that motion. I will start to roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that is six to one, so the consent, or six to zero, so the consent will move on. And the next thing that we have, after I go through to page two, is a staff recognition report by Gary Reeder. Gary, you have the podium, sir.
Speaker, your honor, we have a couple of recognitions tonight, two from the police department. Officer Danette Vargas has achieved her intermediate certificate from the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. In order to get that certificate, must possess a basic certificate, a baccalaureate degree from a accredited college or university, and served in law enforcement for a minimum of two years. That same certificate was also achieved by, excuse me, Corporal Bruce Lovell has received his advanced post certificate. In order to be eligible for that certificate, you must possess the intermediate certificate, have a college degree from an accredited college or university, and shall have served in law enforcement for a minimum of four years. So congratulations to Corporal Lovell and Officer Vargas. We also have the distinct honor of receiving advanced notice from the Disability Action Center, who will be awarding an award to the Moscow Parks and Recreation. The Center, the Disability Action Center found that four of Moscow's parks are fully accessible, as well as the playgrounds. DAC will be presenting the Moscow Parks, the Vital Resource Award for 2014 at a celebration which will be held on, at Mountain View Park from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on July 26th. So, great opportunity to attend that and watch the Parks and Recreation Department receiving awards. So, that's what I have for this evening.
Gary, again, what was that time for the, which park was that at?
That is in Mountain View Park, 11 to 3. I'll have to dig through again. 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on July 26th.
Okay, this Saturday.
It will be open to the public and feature the live music by John and Rand, arts and crafts and disability resource booths, children and activities, door prizes, and a free barbecue.
Gary, could you email us that, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, next is the mayoral appointments that I have, and there's four that I recommended to the council. Ellis Effer to the Moscow Arts Commission with an expiration term of December 31, 2016. Clayton McFarland, Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, which expires December 31 of 2016 as well. Mary Stinson, Human Rights Commission, this is a non-voting county seat, and the expiration on that will also be December 31, 2016. And Jaclyn Wallace, Parks and Recreation Commission, which would expire December 31, 2015. That, of course, is if the council approves these four nominees.
Mr. Mayor?
John?
I move that we approve all four of the nominees. Second?
Okay, John Weber made the motion to approve all four, and Tom seconded that, and I'll start to roll with you, John.
Aye.
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 Okay, six to zero, so all of those nominees. Are any of you folks here, I'd like to, this evening, please stand up? You must be, are you Clayton?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come up on the podium and talk just for a minute and introduce yourself, sir, so these guys can see who you are?
Mayor, council members. My name is Clayton. I attend the University of Idaho. I'll be a senior this year in the School of Business, and I also manage a property company here in Moscow.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Anybody, any of the other three here besides? Clayton, thank you very much. Thank you for attending, Clayton. Okay, we will move on now to item four, which is a public comment in mayor's responsibility. So we allow 15 minutes of time for folks to get up and chat on various things, as long as they're not on the agenda tonight or not anything pending before planning and zoning or board of adjustments, or on our agenda that we currently have. And if you'd like to address this, you can at this time. So if you want to come up, you've got three minutes, sir. State your, please state your name and your address for us.
My name is Patrick O'Connell, and my address is 228 South Cleveland in Moscow. And the situation that I'd like to address is, I've done, I'm a landscape architect. I own a design and build firm, and I've been in business for about 36 years in town. And kind of a new situation that I see happening is a lot of these older people in these older neighborhoods, their fences need adjustment. After 40 years, the posts are rotting, the two-by-four stringer rails are deteriorating, the fences are in disrepair. With the new ordinance, and this is really kind of occurring on, the problem that I see is arising on any corner lot. I don't see it so much as an issue of sightlines. I see it as adopting a new code that was written somewhere else and isn't sensitive to Moscow's situation. A lot of these clients are in their late 70s, 80s, 90s, their fences are in disrepair, and now where they've had their yards and their landscape beds for the last 40 years and the situation they are now, now the new code addresses that their fence has to be moved back another 20 feet back unless they rebuild it three feet or four feet with half of the spacing being open. Another situation, some of these corner lots have swimming pools, so it's kind of a catch-22. They can't repair the six-foot fence, it has to go around it, and they'll have to put a three-foot fence, which means, you know, the swimming pool is now going to be an attractive nuisance to young children. So, I was talking to Wayne Kraus, and I was coming up with some ideas. I think when I was talking to Mike Gray down at the city in the building department, I think we could address each one of these situations. I'm not talking about new construction in new neighborhoods. I'm talking about existing neighborhoods where the fences have been up for 40 years, the landscape beds have been addressed. Maybe they could have a little bit of leeway to address what I call like historic privilege or heritage privilege, to where they can make a decision at that time if it's not obscuring sightline or making a traffic situation. I'm finding when I'm looking at these situations, that if you owned a corner lot, you really don't own anything to almost where your house starts. That whole side property, which a lot of these houses are, that's the only yard they have. They might only have 15 feet to the back of the property line. All the, all their property is on both sides of the house, and by going to the right-of-way and then another 20 feet, they're almost to their garage, there might be enough room for a gate, but I think if it's done tastefully, creatively, I think they could have their yard back. And I think every fence could be addressed individually. I think the people downtown are easy to work with, and I think they have the capability to address this from issue to issue. But right now, they have to follow the code, and their hands are tied.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Connell. I'd like Bill Belknap to respond to this. He's our community development director.
So, the zoning code, I know it was, been in effect since at least 1991. The zoning code does limit the height of fences in the front yard setback. Most commonly, depending upon the zoning district, that ranges from 15 feet to 20 feet from the front property line into the property. And it does limit the height of solid fences to no more than three feet in height, and open fences can be four and a half feet in height. Once you get back behind that front yard setback, then you can go to a six-foot solid fence. And it also applies to street-side yard setbacks. So if you're in that street-side yard, which might be 13 to 15 feet, I reduced the R1 recently, that same limitation is in effect. So if you're out in that front, in that street-side setback, solid fences can only be three feet high or four and a half feet for an open fence. I believe the intent when the city adopted that standard was to try to maintain kind of the openness of front yards and street-side yards as you kind of wrap around, and to avoid what can be somewhat of kind of a stockade look if you have six-foot fences out in front of homes, out in close proximity to the sidewalk. But there are a number of homes that either fences were established prior to the standards that came into effect in 91, where they have existing fences that may be in those setback locations that may be higher than the standards that are allowable today. That's what we consider to be a non-conforming structure or a non-conforming fence. It's allowed to be, remain, they're allowed to do repairs, but if it's a wholesale reconstruction, they are obligated underneath the code, as it is written today, to meet the current standards within the zoning code. So that's currently what exists. I mean, we certainly could explore, but it literally would have to take a look at all of the non-conformity language of the code. When the council adopted the code in 91 and the non-conformity language that existed, the intent was that things that were not in compliance with those new standards would kind of be lost in time, and new construction and replacements would become in conformance of those standards, so that there's a uniform standard for all property owners and they all have the same, you know, rights and opportunities. And there are, there are cases where we have had variances requested because either they've had a historical fence there, or it was that example of a home that was developed where they really had no rear yard or very limited rear yard area, and oftentimes that street-side was, was what they were using effectively as their rear yard area. And so there have been variances granted to allow for the construction of fences that exceeded the standard, but those have to be considered by the Board of Adjustment on a case-by-case basis.
Thanks, Bill. Walter, did you have a question?
Well, I think I'm more clear about what Mr. O'Connell's talking about. You're talking about fences that need to be repaired, that then fall under the ordinance because they are non-conforming?
No, yeah, they're, they're in need of repair right at this point, and you could do it hodgepodge and put a diagonal up, and, I mean, that's just not the way to do it. Usually the posts are rotting about 13 inches down, so it's time to put a new fence in. But they've established the border, and like Bill had said, some of these houses, and the one I'm talking is, I'm doing a project for Rich and Pat Koster on 925 Park Drive by Triangle Park. And beautiful, beautiful yard, and been there 40 years, and now that whole yard is going to be lost. And I understand the fort, you know, Apache, stockade look, but I don't think that's the situation in a lot of these. A lot of these corner lots, they don't start the fence really till the front facade and then wrap around the side property, then connect to the back property, then all the way back to the house. It's not like somebody's putting a six-foot fence right off the sidewalk up there. And especially in this situation, that is their yard. And another one that I was addressing, if you take Blaine Street and run it right through to D Street right there, there is a pool behind that fence. That fence needs to be repaired, and it's going to be the same situation. And there's a pool back there.
Well, one of the things that Bill had mentioned, Mr. O'Connell, is the fact that there are, we do have a Board of Adjustments, and variances can come in front of that board.
Right.
And they can determine that, and that would be, you know, the basis of them making a determination. John?
I think it's more than a variance. I think it's, you know, trying to get all this stuff across the board, so one sentence, I mean, the whole code is like one paragraph. And in my 40 years of working in this town, it's, every situation is not just so cut and dry.
John, you have a question?
Yeah, Bill, didn't you just say that when it comes time to repair these fences, that that is, it's not cut and dry what you have to do or what has to be done? Each activity or each occurrence is judged on its own merit, so, for example, if you had one, one fence, I'm sorry, but you can't replace this. Another fence, you can replace most of it. Is, did I hear you right, or?
If, so in most instances, in all instances, the code standards are the same. If somebody's doing a repair, so let's say they're only going to be replacing a few posts or a couple boards, then, you know, certainly a repair is something that they can do, but if it, if it is a replacement of more than 50% of the fence or the materials, then we consider that to be the establishment of a new fence, or essentially constructing a new fence, and then it does have to meet that new standard. There have been variances that have been granted. One, one in the park neighborhood, I recall a few years ago, that was that similar situation. And I think we probably see this more often on street-side yards than front yards. It's, the one that I've seen has been the corner lots, and it's the street-side yard that is really oftentimes the more significant issue. And the Planning and Zoning Commission in the last year has looked at modifying or reducing, or I guess I should say allowing, an encroachment of fences up to six feet height into street-side yards, but only to a certain distance. We have looked at an earlier draft, and that's been under conversation, and I can certainly bring this up with the Planning and Zoning Commission when they meet and see if we can further that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
One other, you said 50%. Is that part of the code, or is that a city policy?
That has just been a rule of thumb. There is not defined in the code what is considered to be the, a new fence construction. It was if you're, if more than half the fence is now new material, that's essentially what we consider to be a replacement.
Wayne, you got a question?
On a corner lot on the side facing the street, the side of the house facing the street, is there, is there a particular distance that you can go away from the street? If the setback is 15 feet, supposing somebody went, if they had a 80-foot wide lot, say they went 40 feet back from the street, would that still apply as far as the height and type of fence?
So the setback is measured from the beginning of their property line into, towards the homes, in, towards the interior portion of the lot. And so it's 15 feet or it's 13 feet, depending upon the zoning district, and that is a street-side setback. If the fence is going to be placed within that area, then those height limitations come into effect. If the fence was going to be established farther into the lot, so let's say it's a district that has a 15-foot street-side setback, as long as they're 15 feet in from the property line, they can go to a six-foot high solid fence at that point.
And Bill, I heard you, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said planning and zoning is looking at this now?
We have discussed it in the last year, and we had an early draft looking at allowance of a reduction, or essentially a encroachment, because there are, there are certainly situations where that street-side setback, especially on corner lots, did reduce kind of the usable rear yard area if it was a fairly shallow depth of lot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
I was just going to say, I was aware of this situation. It keeps reoccurring, and that 50%, I mean, you could do 50% one year, 50% the next year, you have a new fence. You never had to get the permit, you know? You could just do it as a repair. So, I just think it needs to be readdressed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address this before I move on to the next thing? Thank you very much. The next thing we'll move to is item five, perch request for a letter from the council allowing beer and wine license within 300 feet of a school or church per Idaho Code 23-913. Rod Hall, our city attorney, will present. Good evening, Rod.
Good evening, your honor, council members. Tonight, I believe the owner of the perch is here, and his attorney, and they'll probably want to address the council. The perch is here is requesting a letter from the city council, allowing them to sell beer or wine within 300 feet of a school. Under Idaho Code 231011B and Idaho Code 231307A, it prohibits any business from selling beer or wine for on-premises consumption within 300 feet of any church, school, or any other place of worship unless the city council approves the waiver of the requirement. The perch is located within 300 feet on the University of Idaho campus, within 300 feet of two religious establishments. There's the Church of Latter Day Saints, the institute, or I think they call it the institute, is located on Deacon Street, and then right across the way is there's the Campus Christian Center. ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Control for the State of Idaho, has informed the applicant that such city council approval is required prior to the issuance of the license by the State of Idaho. The applicant has represented that he is remodeling the perch to add the required kitchen facilities to be able to operate as a restaurant. In order to meet the ABC definition of a restaurant, and they're eligible for the endorsement for issuance of the license for onsite consumption of beer or wine, the business must derive 40% of its revenue from the direct sales of food. The applicant for ABC, the applicant for the ABC restaurant endorsement must affirmantly declare that the business meets the food sales requirement. And if ABC grants the permit, then the perch would have a period of time in which to establish the fact that at least 40% of its revenues are derived from restaurant food sales. Just a little background, the perch is located in a neighborhood business zone in the city of Moscow, and in that zone, restaurants are permitted in the neighborhood zone while bars are prohibited. Restaurants with an endorsement from ABC, a county license, and a city and beer/wine license may sell beer and wine for onsite consumption. The perch has operated as a convenience store for many years, selling grocery items, including packaged beer and wine for off-site consumption. A few years ago, I believe there was an owner in there that expanded that and started selling wine, or selling sandwiches, deli sandwiches, and I think he somehow got a beer or wine license in there. I don't think we looked into it or knew that 300 feet requirement was at that time. And in 2013, the prior owner started this remodel as a restaurant. It had been operating for a little while, and it was discovered it was basically being run as a bar because it was excluding people under 21. They decided that they were going to remodel to try to meet the definition of a restaurant and sell food items. They were given an opportunity to do that last year. ABC informed me that they were doing an investigation to see whether that business was, met the 40% food sales requirement in order to keep its endorsement. ABC represented to me that they didn't believe that the prior owner was operating in good faith as a restaurant, and were in the process of going to revoke the restaurant endorsement. The prior owner has apparently given up the business, and there is a new owner of the business, Mr. Singh, who will be here, or his attorney, to speak to the city council. So what they're here today is to ask for a waiver or approval of the city of Moscow so that they can sell beer or wine in their establishment. And I believe that Dave Limits is here, and there's also probably a, somebody from the Church of Latter Day Saints Institute that's also here that would like to address the council.
Okay, well, first off, council got questions for Rod before we get anybody else up here? You guys got questions for Rod? John?
I want to make sure I understand this. The license to sell on premise is what we're talking about here, not the license to sell off-premise.
Correct. And we're talking about a waiver.
So if, if they get a waiver, that means that if they can prove 40% or better sales from food, then they can sell on premise.
Correct.
If they cannot, they can still sell off-premise.
Well, they would have to change, get a different license for that, but they could operate as a convenience store and for off, packaged alcohol for off-site consumption, as they've done, as they've done in the past.
Wayne?
Well, then, follow-up on John's question. If they receive a license for sale on premise, then are they then precluded from selling off, to selling so they can take it for off-premise use?
No, I believe that they can get a license to do that also.
Either way.
Mm-hmm. But that would be for off-site consumption, so people could, I think they had one, operate as a convenience store, or with an endorsement, they were selling greylers, I believe, too, also for off-site consumption prior.
Other questions for Rod? Tom?
I was just going to point out, Mr. Mayor, that we had this issue before us at Administrative Committee last week. We did not have the presence of the owner, and we did not have any, any proof that the conditions were being met with respect to sales, so it left our committee with no recommendation.
Okay. Well, let's listen to this semi over here, Gary.
Sure, I just wanted to point out, as Rod indicated, that state code prohibits the issuance of a license for onsite consumption sales within 300 feet of a school, church, or place of worship. The only exception is if the city council, in its discretion, issues a letter or an approval of that, in fact waiving that, that provision. So it is an exception. The rule is that it may not be allowed.
Okay. Well, let's hear from the applicant. Would the applicant like to address this, please? Mr. Singh? If I hope I pronounced that correct.
Counsel, if I might, I'm Scott Chapman. I'm an attorney from Lewis and Idaho, and I'm representing Mr. Singh.
Okay.
If I could have some time to address some of these issues, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm certain that many of you are aware of the history of this facility. It's a perch, and it's been situated in the, not the middle, but inside the University of Idaho campus for some long time. It was there when I went to law school in the early 80s. It had been there for some time prior to that. It's our position that the history of this facility has been, from at least the 60s to early 70s, the sale of buy-the-drink alcohol, and also as being run as a convenience store. When Mr. Singh's predecessor took this over, it was with the idea that it would be worked into increased, the food sales would be increased to a point where it would fit this 40% requirement. It was virtually nothing at the time that he took it over. With the addition of a microwave oven and a hot dog oven, he had the sales up to, somewhere in the neighborhood, 30% sales. I take some, I guess, question as to what the situation of this investigation is, because it's our understanding that the investigation never occurred because of this, this transfer of the business, and so we don't ever, we don't know exactly what the results of that were. I have some documentation, some of which I don't have extra copies of, and some I do for the council, if I might, kind of out, setting out where we are at with this thing and the state, as well as our efforts to change this. Mr. Singh has obtained-
Mr. Chapman, I need you to speak in the microphone so this can be recorded. Thank you.
Mr. Singh has obtained or is working on bids for the addition of a full kitchen into this facility, and I have the bid outputs from that. I also have what he has prepared, or anticipates to be his full menu for this, along with the floor plan. I don't have extra copies of that, so if I could, I'll just leave those up here.
We have a menu, is in the packet.
Oh, it was?
So we do not need that.
And the floor plan, too.
And the floor plan as well.
Then I, then I won't need to do that if, if, I won't say anything if I could step away, please.
Certainly, you can step, you just, we record this by video.
He's just the guy helping run the-
You may approach.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. What appears to me to be maybe some misunderstanding about what the status of this is, at this juncture, I don't believe that Mr. Singh has applied for any type of license from the city of Moscow. He has applied for a license from the state, and- He has applied for a license from the state, and as a part of that thought at one point, thought at one point that he needed to obtain this waiver that was referred to. Now, I'm not certain about what the status of that is, but as we go through these materials, I'll point out to you that the state has issued him his license without the waiver referred to in the agenda. They asked about, in the first page of this, they asked about the transfer, that was done. The second page is the temporary license which has been issued to the Perch Inc., which is owned by Mr. Singh. You will note that it does not have a liquor approval, but does have the restaurant approval on it. The reason for the temporary license was set out on the third page, which is the application is being held pending receipt of the following. And what they asked for was a completed affidavit from Mr. Ichbal, the previous owner, in the name of applicant Perch Inc. That's all they asked for. They didn't say they needed a waiver, they didn't say they needed anything more. That application with the, or that affidavit with the correct name was faxed to the state on today's date. The statute in question does pretty much state, as Mr. Hall had indicated, that requires the 300-foot measurement. I guess I have a couple of questions about that, and one, and the first is, if in fact the LDS facility is a church, and if in fact the Christian center at the university is a church, as the statute defines those materials, it's our understanding that-
Are you suggesting they're not?
I'm suggesting that worship isn't going on at that facility, that they're having meetings, et cetera, there, but that worship isn't going on.
Well, we won't get into the definition of what would constitute a church, whether it's a meeting or a Sunday ceremony or whatever, because I think that's irrelevant. But what we will do is, what we're doing here is my understanding, the council is going to determine whether they want to waive a letter, or have a letter that would waive the requirement. Is that my understanding, Gary?
Yeah, I think as Rod indicated that, I think Mr. Chapman brings up a good point, a legalistic point, whether or not worship is occurring, or these two institutions are in fact churches. But I think that, under the common understanding, I would presume, that we would presume they were churches until it is proven that they are not. I don't think it's the council's place to determine whether or not these are houses of worship. They held themselves out to be a church. Lieutenant Limits interviewed the, Mr. Jenkins from the LDS Institute and indicated that they meet that definition, so-
Let me ask, is there somebody on the audience from the LDS Church here? Okay, well, we'll get you up here in a little bit as soon as Mr. Chapman's done, okay?
Anyway, as I'd indicated, I think that despite Mr. Redner's comments, that there is an issue regarding that. I think there is an issue perhaps regarding the distance. Again, this facility has been operated as a convenience store slash beer place, buy-the-drink for years and years and years. And what Mr. Singh is attempting to do here is to seek an opportunity to, I guess, upgrade that, to make it into something more than just a bar to hang out at. As I said, the, all that you can see, the efforts are going to be made into putting a full bore kitchen, which has never existed there before, and to ensure that, in fact, that the food sales meet the 40 percent requirement. I do think that there is the ability to do this, if you will, provisionally, so that he would have the opportunity to have X, you know, period of time to establish that in fact his food sales were at the, at the point of requirement for the 40 percent.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chapman, we'd like, do you have a question?
Question for Mr. Chapman. I'm a little confused. Mr. Chapman, you seem to be saying that they have a license, that it's good until August the 16th of 2014, that it's pending some paperwork, my word, to establish the name or something like that. So far, correct so far?
Correct.
So why are you here?
Well, I'm here because I read the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I could not tell exactly what the, what this council was going to do or not do regarding the perch. Mr. Singh has not applied for a city license at this point. The only thing that was out there was this waiver. It's my understanding that he came in and, last week, and said, "I don't need the waiver anymore," and was told that this meeting was going to go ahead, and then I got on the internet, looked at the agenda, and I couldn't tell if this meeting was going to be specific to, they were going to issue that waiver or not, period, end of story, or if it was going to be broader than that.
Rod, would you, would you like to address that, please?
Yes. I had been in contact with ABC down in Lewiston and down in Meridian. I was informed by them that they told Mr. Singh that he needed to get a waiver in order to get a permanent license. I talked to him today and said, "Looks like he has a license, what's going on?" And they said, "Well, this is to give him an opportunity to get the waiver from the city, to be able to get his plans going if he's going to go forward with his business." I was informed today that if he didn't get the waiver, they were not going to issue a permanent license. We're only here today to talk about the waiver, only about the whether you're going to grant it or not. If you don't grant it, and ABC gives them permit, then that's a different story. And then we'll deal with that as that goes forward. The only thing the council's here to talk about is to whether they're going to grant that waiver that's required under the state code.
Okay, very good.
And I guess, as I would respond to that, all's I have from the state is what you see. And that is, here's the temporary license, you'll get the permanent license when you provide us with the transfer, it is Perch Inc., which was done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapman, I'd like to get, who, somebody wants, you want to ask this kind of question?
Well, either one, whatever you say.
I don't care.
Okay. My question is, I'm a little confused now, but that seems to be going around some. If he does not get the permanent license, that just means that the perch cannot sell beer and wine on premise?
Correct, they would still be operated as-
They can still-
They can still operate as what, Rod?
The restaurant.
Without beer and wine sales.
Without beer and wine.
And only have beer and wine to go.
If they have that license, yes.
If they have that license. Okay. So if I may, so those are two different licenses?
I believe so.
The onsite and the offsite?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the offsite doesn't need a waiver from us?
My understanding it doesn't.
No.
No.
Okay.
And it's been, and it's sold offsite, or packaged alcohol for a lot of years for offsite consumption.
Gary?
The two statutes of prohibition, and there's also a companion statute for liquor, indicate that they relate to liquor, beer, and wine consumption on premises. They do not speak of packaged sales for offsite consumption.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, we may call you back up here, sir. I would like to have the representative from LDS Church step to the podium, sir, and please give this council your name and your address, sir, and tell us if you are or are not a church.
My name is Dr. Kip Jenkins, I'm the director of the LDS Institute of Religion. I'd like to invite, can you hear now?
Yeah, get that little, oh, dears.
902 Deacon Avenue is the institute. I would like to invite all of you to come Sunday at 11 o'clock for communion services, and then at 12 o'clock for Old Testament Sunday School. And then at 12, and then at 1 o'clock to come for priesthood meeting for the men and women's auxiliary meeting for the women. That is held every single week. Over 150 students attend that. That is a church. We also qualify as a, as a school. We are a member of the church educational system of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, with enrollment over 1.5 million college students worldwide. We offer classes in Bible, Old Testament, New Testament, Book of Mormon, Dodman Covenants, marriage enrichment, marriage enhancement, all directed under the church educational system with a commissioner of education in Salt Lake City. So we qualify both as a church and a school. 1960, when the establishment that was the church, was the perch, requested a permission for a license, Joe J. Christensen, the former president of BYU, and my predecessor, came before this board and begged you to be obedient to that, that ordinance of 300 feet. We qualified as a church, we qualified as a school, we asked you to let that ordinance stand. They are 292 feet from our door. If you measure from property to property, they're shorter than that. We did that again in the 19, when the counselor there was going to law school, I was here then. We did it again, we asked you once again to not allow that allowance. I represent 1,100 college students who are LDS, whether single, married, I represent their children that come to that building for recreation and for church services. I'm asking you to obey that ordinance and to not allow an exemption for this rule. We have had nothing but difficulties with the perch. I've had students who have had beer thrown on them, if they've been walking to class because they're Mormons. I've had swearing at them as they go to that GD Institute. And that's all on a, on a thing that should be provided by safe passage, is the main entryway going up from the institute and that back parking lot, the University of Idaho, which they use our sidewalk and go right up the south side of university, right past that deck, filled with smoke and open containers of beer. I hope Mr. Singh has a wonderful business as a restaurant. I will come and frequent that, when he sells some good sandwiches, as good as stack sales. But I am asking you to be obedient to the covenant that has been given. It's 300 feet, Your Honor, Councilman, it's 300 feet, not 292 feet. We are a church, and we are a school, and we have sufficient, if you want, I will pack this corridor with LDS college students that will ask you to do what I'm asking you to Any questions?
Thank you, sir, I don't know, any council have questions? Thank you very much. Wayne?
Now, it's my turn to be a little bit confused. Is it my understanding that in the past, the perch has been selling beer and wine by the drink for onsite premise drinking?
I found out today, there was a business in there before, when they did a remodel, that expanded from grocery items to deli items, and did have a beer and wine license from the city.
For onsite?
But that business had lapsed, and it was outlapsed for more than a year before the next-
Did this council, in fact, grant a waiver so that they were allowed to do that?
That was not brought before this council.
So they were in violation of state code?
More than likely.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not vote to this request, whether it's before us or not, now or in the future, as long as I'm on this council for a waiver for the state code. I have a degree from the University of Idaho, I did not do undergraduate work there, but I've lived in Moscow almost 25 years. I believe the majority of students on that campus are under 21. I do not believe beer, wine, by-the-drink, much less liquor, should be sold in the middle of that campus. We have an alcohol task force that was formed a year or more ago, between the university, the city police department, other entities, because of instances of alcohol-fueled injury, death, property damage. It is affecting the university, not to mention the students and their parents and families, but the university's ability to serve as the flagship university of this state. It is a black eye, in the past, on the University of Idaho and the city of Moscow. I am sure that the perch is not the only reason those things are occurring, and don't misunderstand me, but any opportunity that I have to say no, I will do so. I do not think this is a good use of that facility, that piece of property located where it is. And I would appreciate the support of my fellow council members in that regard, thank you.
I want to hear from anybody else who wants to testify before achieving any conclusions.
Do we have anybody else on the audience that we have not heard from yet?
Especially Lieutenant Limits.
Well, that's up to Lieutenant Limits, if he would like to address as he may, he does not have to, but if he would, he's sure welcome to come up. It's his call.
Your Honor, he has some information, they actually went and measured distances to the Latter Day Saint Church, and also to the Campus Christian Center.
Okay, please state your name and address, even though we all know you, Dave.
Dave Limits, 543 Deer Metal Court, Moscow, Idaho. Do you have some questions? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Rod said.
Just since you guys, you had an officer that went out and made some measurements today?
Yes. He said there's some measurements, some-
Yeah, Corporal McIntosh made some measurements. So the measurements for the perch are as follows. Campus Christian Center, front door of the perch to back stairwell entrance is 124 feet 8 inches. Front door of the perch to the property line, 75 feet. Front door of the perch to the front door of the Campus Christian Center is 127 feet 1 inch. LDS Institute, front door of the perch to the property line is 201 feet. Front door of the perch to the front door of the institute is 292 feet and 8 inches. So it's well within the 300 feet zone.
Okay. Well, we got some collaborating measurements, are there questions for Dave? Yeah, Dave, I guess in the past, has there been an issue with?
Yes, we've had multiple issues at the perch involving alcohol issues. We've had fights, numerous assaults, so, yeah, we've had quite a few issues there. Underage drinking, people have been cited for MIP coming out of the establishment.
And again, this doesn't reflect on the current owner, but-
Correct.
There's a historical-
This is all prior.
Yes.
Tom, you had your hand up.
Yeah, well, I was, this is kind of a little bit different question, but the Idaho State Police letter that we have is not dated, and I'm just wondering if we know what the date is of that letter. It perhaps is the same date as the temporary alcohol beverage license that's on the other side, but it's not-
Rod would have to answer that.
Does, do you know?
I do not know, that's one thing I noticed, too, on the date of it.
Okay. And then I had a comment. I just wanted to affirm that I, I've attended numerous religious services at the Campus Christian Center, as a member of the Quaker meeting that takes place there. So I do know that services occur there, in case anybody was wondering.
Other questions for Lieutenant Limits? Thank you, Lieutenant Limits.
Thank you.
You're free to sit down. Is there anybody else out there that would like to speak that has not came up before us yet that would like to talk? Please come up, state your name, address.
David Pierce, 716 East F Street, Moscow. I'm not going to take much time, but I sat here listening, and I have basically three comments that summarize, again, what Councilman Steed said. I think the state code is there and says what it does for a reason. It's not a good idea to have alcohol close to educational facilities or religious facilities. The other thing that was at least intimated in a previous person here was that, well, this has gone on there before. this has gone on there before. There's been alcohol served there by the drink. But past practices do not mean that they should still be allowed to continue, and I think that's where we are with this thing. Yes, it's happened in the past, but that doesn't mean it should happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else like to speak out there that I've not spoke yet?
Give them a chance to worry about it, maybe.
John?
I just want to go back to page one. We are talking about not the ability of the Perch to sell beer and wine to go in a closed container. We're only talking about should they be allowed to serve beer and wine on premise.
John, what we're talking, the other thing that the council is determining, whether we're going to do a letter of waiver to the state, that's all we're doing.
That's right, and that's the only thing that we can address in that letter.
Right. We're not making a decision whether they can sell anything. It's just whether we will go against what an ordinance says to give a letter of waiver. That's all we're doing here.
Yeah. And we can do that if we choose or not, if we choose.
That's correct.
Okay.
Wayne?
Well, Walter took a lot of the fire I was going to talk about. You know, I went to University of Idaho in late 60s, early 70s, and drinking was a problem then. It continues to be a problem. The city is working really hard at establishing a relationship with University of Idaho, a partnership if you will, towards a lot of areas, whether it's economic development, whether it's increase in student body enrollment, or whether it's alcohol-related problems. I too believe that a bar that serves on premises is not appropriate in the core of the University of Idaho or on the campus. I am particularly disappointed in the fact that apparently it has been happening with not very good results and without having come to the city asking for any kind of a waiver towards the Idaho state code. Now that being said, it's unfortunate that the new owner is bearing to the reputation of the previous owners and the way that they ran it. But I too am extremely hesitant to allow this to continue on, and so I'm not going to vote to offer a waiver.
Art, you act like you've got something you'd like to say.
You know, kind of hovering on the fence, I'm not entirely opposed to the ability to sell a glass of beer with a sandwich at a restaurant. However, I think the timing may be a little off for this. I would like to have seen it establish itself as a restaurant first, establish itself as a source of food, and then perhaps approach the issue of beer or wine by the drink. So at the moment, I'm leaning towards if there can be established the fact that this is a legitimate restaurant making most of its money from the sale of food, then I would be willing to rethink the issue of beer or wine by the drink there at the premises. But as is, I think it's premature to go the whole way right out the gate.
Tom?
I just want to follow up on what Art just said, that it's, I don't believe that they have to demonstrate a majority of sales derived from restaurant food, but just 40% from restaurant food, right? So, I mean, it's, but I think, I would feel fine if there was some demonstration that they were actually a restaurant with, you know, a beer or wine or something along with it. But I'm not suggesting that we should say, go ahead and allow them to be a bar.
Dan?
I got a procedural question for the staff then, I guess. It sounds like up here that we're not necessarily in favor of this waiver letter. So if we take no action, then we don't have to, then it's passed. I mean, we would make a motion to make a waiver letter. There's no sense in making a motion to not do it. So we could just close the issue and move along if that's the case, or should we make an official, we're not going to do this?
My recommendation that you make it official, that then that declination by the council can then be forwarded to the folks who do issue the license, the alcohol beverage control folks.
Then I guess I would make a motion that we do not prepare a waiver letter for ABC.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Dan to not approve a letter or waiver to ABC and a second by Walter. Is there further discussion? John?
I, I too have gone to university, and matter of fact, I served a lot of product to the university, both as a Wonder Bread salesman back in the early 80s and then after that with Budweiser and Coors. And I helped install the draft system that the previous owner had so he could sell beer by the glass by the pitcher. I don't have the problem with it that Wayne and Walter have. I do have some of the same worries that Art talked about. And so I would prefer to, if they're serious about opening a restaurant, open the restaurant. And then after six months or whatever a reasonable amount of time is, and if they have at that point proven that they can operate a profitable restaurant without having on-premise sales of beer and wine, then they can come before this body again and ask the same question. So I'm going to vote not to send a letter.
Other discussion before we take a roll? Okay, I'll restate the motion. The motion was to not send a letter to ABC. Recommend this, so not send a waiver. Everybody understand that? We'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, six to zero. We will not send the letter. You want to document that over there, please? And we will move on to the next thing. Thank you. Okay, folks, item number six. Interlocal Agreement for Joint Operation in the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport. Presentation by Gary.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would note that there was an incorrect, you've all been given copies of the updated agreement. There were some changes that we had talked about that were not included in that earlier version. You've since been given the current one, which the heading is Joint Operating Agreement for the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport. So as you can see from the descriptor in the agenda, the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman have, along with some other partners, partnered in the management of the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport for many years. The last agreement that is current is in 1971, and signatory to that agreement are the Port of Whitman, Latack County, University of Idaho, Washington State University, city of Moscow, and city of Pullman. There have been several times over the past years that, and several, I mean, three or four times, that updating that agreement has come forward, and because there were so many players involved in the agreement, it always seemed that there was an issue with how you proceed. How does this happen? Each body wanted to have it explained to them, and I don't know if it was because of inertia, changeover of the board, or whatever, but we never did, or the airport was never successful in getting that agreement updated. So since that time, we've been operating under the past agreement, as the council well knows, for many years. When an FAA grant is offered to the airport, and the airport, by the way, is managed by an executive director, as you know, the mayor of Pullman serves as the chair of the board, the mayor of Moscow is the vice chair of the board. Business is conducted through the city of Pullman. They utilize their finance staff for their financials, so on and so forth. However, when the executive director would bring an FAA grant before the council, it was always the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman who had to pass the grant authorization, agree to the grant assurances, and the council would approve each of those grants. They would be signed, and typically what would happen is our mayor would sign it because our council meets on Monday nights, then it would be transported personally over to the city of Pullman, who would then approve it and sign it that evening because their council meetings are on Tuesday nights. And that went along very well for many years. The city of Moscow's participation is in operating funds for the airport, signing the grant assurance agreements, and we also have a small outstanding bond that began with the construction of the air terminal building in, I believe it was the 80s. Well, as the council well knows, and you just had an FAA grant before you at two council meetings ago, or one council meeting ago, excuse me, for about $1.87 million for snow removal equipment, runway, and apron repair at the airport. And at that time, the FAA informed us, as they have for the past two years, that the current agreement needs to be upgraded. The impetus behind that upgrade or the revision of the agreement is because the airport is just about to embark on a runway realignment project, which has been discussed for many years, but very much so in the last five years. That is a many-million-dollar project, and it caused the FAA to review the agreement and make sure that the agreement itself meets the requirements of the grant assurances for these FAA grants. In doing that review, there were some issues that the FAA brought up. The main issue was that the sponsors of the grants, the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman, did not have sole appointing authority for the airport board. Their concern was if the airport board is not, the seats on that board are not controlled by those two sponsors. And essentially, in the past, it's been almost a pay-to-play type situation. Each of the folks who were signatory to the agreement would put some money into the operation of the airport. The FAA didn't like that situation, said that the sponsors needed to be in control of the appointments for that airport. So at that time, we started negotiating the agreement about a year and a half ago now, trying to find some different organization structure that the FAA would find or could approve. What they indicated was that the city of Moscow needed to appoint the representatives from the Idaho side of the agreement, and the city of Pullman needed to make the appointments for the Washington side of the agreement. The airport board, as it sits right now, is an eight-person board. The Port of Whitman contributes funding for support of the airport, but did not want to be included on the board. So there are four representatives from the Washington state side and four representatives from the Idaho state side. Meeting with the attorney from the city of Pullman, of course Rod came on in August of last year. So when I was interim city attorney, we began negotiating this agreement, and we thought that we would talk about a structure that is common in a lot of places, and that is an odd number of board appointees. But we wanted to make sure that there was equal legislative authority on each side of the state line. So the proposal was to have the chair of the board, the mayor of Pullman, appoint four members from the state of Washington. The mayor of Moscow would appoint three members from the state of Idaho, thereby creating a nine-person board, but to have the mayor of the city of Pullman not have a vote except to break a tie. We floated that. Both legislative bodies, the city of Moscow, city of Pullman, were comfortable with that. The FAA indicated that that was not acceptable to them. Since the city of Pullman was a sponsor, they wanted to make sure that we weren't divesting one of the sponsors from a vote. So that took us right back to having an eight-member board. So the mayor of Pullman will remain the chair and appoint three additional members from the Washington side, one of whom, one who will be a representative of the president of Washington State University, one who will be a city resident at large, city of Pullman resident, and one who will be a resident of Whitman County who may represent the Port of Whitman. On the Idaho side, the mayor of Pullman will have a vote. The mayor of the city of Moscow, as the vice chair, would have a vote and would appoint a representative of the president of the University of Idaho, a citizen of Moscow at large, and a representative of Latack, excuse me, a resident of Latack County who may represent the Latack County Commissioners. This gives essentially those folks who have a stake in the airport, some say on the airport board, but the ultimate appointing authority is the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman. So the legislative structure that you see, the board structure that you see there is now been accepted by the FAA. That was a big thing to the FAA. And there are some technical things, and I know Rod's ready to talk about some of the infrastructure issues. You'll also notice there is one other section in there that did not exist in the previous agreement, and that is the ability of the city of Moscow to request and the city of Pullman to grant a common interest or co-tenancy, tenants in common, of an undivided one-half interest in the airport land and fixtures. The airport, as far as we know, is titled in the name of the city of Pullman. The city of Moscow has never had a, excuse me, legal interest in the property, an ownership interest in the property. I know the council had some concerns about whether or not the city of Moscow wanted to have an ownership interest in the property. So we structured the agreement so that should the city of Moscow, city council, decide that they want to become owners of an undivided one-half interest in the land and the fixtures of the airport, all the council needs to do is to take a vote on the issue. That action will be delivered to the city of Pullman, and they will then create that co-tenancy, and the city of Moscow will then become owners of an undivided one-half share, one-half interest in the property of the airport. So with that, I know Walter had some discussions or wanted some further clarification about water and sewer services and that sort of thing on the airport. Rod has researched that and he's able to answer any other questions. Suffice it to say in closing, before we get to that, that this document now has been reviewed extensively by the airport's attorney, Kelly Brown, the executive director of the airport, Tony Bean, Laura McAlune, the Pullman city attorney, Mark Workman, Pullman city supervisor, myself, Rod, and has been reviewed by the FAA legal counsel. They've indicated that it does meet their need and will allow us to be, have the agreement in place and ready to proceed with authorization of a grant if it's the council's choice to do so, participation in the runway realignment project, should that project come forward.
Do you want Rod to make the comments?
I think I might be able to keep him from doing that if I can ask you.
Okay, Walter.
I did talk to Rod today about a couple of things, and I think I'm more or less comfortable with what I consider to be some peculiarly worded paragraphs in here that he has managed to explain to me. One thing I would mention, Gary, I think you said land and fixtures twice. It's real property and fixtures.
Yes.
So it's not just the land.
Exactly.
In the city's opportunity, quote unquote, to own half of whatever it is they can identify out there as the real property.
He's talking about 2.2, section 2.2.
Section 2.2. And that we're not doing tonight. If I may, what is the anticipated effective date, and when will the board be reconstituted if we pass this tonight, Gary?
That's an interesting discussion. My assumption would be if this is executed tonight and we've made arrangements with Mayor Johnson and Mark Workman, that it will be transported and they will consider it tomorrow night at their council meeting. Once that is done, my suspicion is that Mayor Lambert and Mayor Johnson will be bringing their appointments forward. I don't know if the airport board will change personnel-wise, but it will definitely be reconstituted under this agreement.
So immediately?
I will put an answer to that, Walter. The next airport board meeting is July 30th, which is coming up a week from Wednesday, so my guess is that will be one of the action items that will be on the agenda. Wayne?
So we have an eight-member board.
Yes.
Each member has an equal vote.
Yes.
You know what the question is?
Yes, tie votes.
What do you do?
What will happen is in any parliamentary society, when there is a, a tiebreaker is always a great thing. I think the US Senate legislatures, our city council, are all set up right. You have someone to break the tie when that happens. What happens in a parliamentary society is if you have a motion come forward, it garners four votes for, and four votes for, and there are four votes against, that motion dies for lack of a majority, thereby providing the opportunity for further negotiation or wearing the other side down. It's just a little messier, but it's.
I think they used to have those even boards back in the days, that duels were legal in the United States, and since that time, they've changed to odd numbers so that.
Then you wouldn't have an even number, and you'd have to get somebody else for you to vote again. That wouldn't work.
Other questions for Gary? John, did you have a question?
I'm ready to make a motion if you.
Anybody else with further discussion?
Unless Rod has something new and different than what he's already told me, I don't need to hear anymore. Thank you.
Well, I would move that we accept the joint operating agreement for the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport, and we accept it as it is written, and that the mayor signs it, and city clerks sign it, and we send it to the City of Pullman post haste.
Second. Okay, John made a motion to approve that with Wayne second to allow for the joint operating agreement for the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport, to give me permission to sign it, as well as Rendeviveity clerk Stephanie Calaz, and to move this forward to the City of Pullman. I will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, so that is accepted, six to zero. So that is the end of that. Thank you very much, and we'll move on.
Your honor, may I be excused, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Gary wants to leave, he's got an early morning tomorrow. Thank you, Gary. We'll go on to reports, and we'll start with administrative. You got anything, Tom?
I have nothing new to add based, from, anything from, that deviates from what we've already covered.
Very good. Walter, we'll go to you next.
We had so many items on consent, I'm trying to quickly check and see if there were any that were before public works that didn't make it there, and I believe that they did. So there was nothing else that public works that didn't get handled by the whole body That's all I have.
Okay, Wayne?
Farmers Market met on the 9th. They're moving along nice and smooth. Everything seems to be working well within the Farmers Market. They're still discussing a variety of things. One, they had a discussion now pertaining to the new citizen survey and to what questions that they may put forth, and they are continuing to have discussions on how to reconfigure the free speech wall, if in fact they decide to do that. So other than that, I had a, the ITD board met, there was an ITD Idaho Department Transportation officials tour of the, our second district, and they met last week at the Intermodal Transportation Center. And we had a nice visit with them, they got to tour the facilities and see how our process works. And the other thing is also last week, I attended the CEA, Clearwater Economic Development Association's operations and finance board meeting, and there's nothing really to report on that. So that's about it.
Art?
Since our last meeting, none of the commissions and boards to which I'm a liaison have met, therefore nothing to report.
Okay, Dan?
July 8th, met with the Arts Commission. They're still trying to recruit some more members. We approved all of their budget requests that they had in our, everybody here attended our budget workshop last Monday, and they've also evidently are, they're starting to get a downtown restroom planning subcommittee together, or at least talking about the one that we do have, and hopefully getting an art component in that. And then pretty much the rest of last week was a lot of, or that week was, meeting with fire chief candidates, and then hopefully soon we'll hear about a new fire chief, so it'll come before the board. Other than that, nothing else going on.
John? John?
Oh, I'm sorry. The only thing I've got is the Human Rights Commission met 4:00 on July 15th, and they're putting together a social justice forum having to do with renters' rights, and that will either be 9/9 or 9/11, and the Fair Housing Committee is going to be part of that. And then they're, they've got a coming face-to-face with hate, a search for a world beyond hate is going to be presented at the U of I on 9/11, and the high school is also going to have a different presentation as soon as they can figure out when they're going to have it, but it will be this fall. And the LGBT music presentation will be 9/16 at the Kenworthy, and that is essentially the things that they've got going on with the Human Rights Commission. My other commissions that I'm either a part of or a liaison to have not met.
Okay, thank you, John. A couple of things that, and this is not necessarily, it's more of a report on something. This was, I did opening remarks at the rendezvous in the park on Friday night. And I got to tell you something, that is a tradition that's been going on for a number of years now, 32 years is how long that thing has been in existence, and it was really a fun evening, a neat evening, and for those of you that don't attend that, I would suggest to do it. It was very nice. I just wanted to throw that out. And that committee that works on rendezvous in the park did an exceptional job in keeping everything in line. It was just a wonderful evening. And the other thing is that I've got a board meeting with the airport, as I said earlier, on the 30th. Outside of that, I do not have anything else, folks.
I move you adjourned.
John makes a motion?
Second.
All in favor, ayes. Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned, folks. Thank you.